Chicken or?
There he was first.
Everyone ready to go?
I'll say.
Judy's not here, so make sure you speak clearly. Yeah. So the microphone picks up. Are we unmuted soon?
You are good to go.
All right, great. Uh, calling the zoning commission regular meeting to order on August first, twenty twenty four at seven P M. Uh, this meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual attendance, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting. Does additional voices cause confusion for this tenement virtual? Uh, roll call. Marzullo here. Crew.
Here.
Uh, Fisher.
Here.
Manly.
Here.
Hey, what's?
Here.
Um, both Long and Mandalakis have excused absences. In the audience, we have uh, trustee Engelman and zoning inspector Blunt. So, um, as we go into uh, the, the first.
Any, anyone virtually? None of the trustees?
No.
Um, any, as we go into the first thing, we're going to uh, review the regular meeting minutes from June sixth meeting. Um, has everyone had a chance to review those? Everyone said yes. Did anyone find any uh, adjustments that need to be made?
I did. Just gotta figure out where I put it in here. Um. So I can kind of write a lock off the top of my head as I find it. Um. There was a second vote, believe it was the preliminary of the sanctuary court. Uh, to the second page there. Um. Myself and Brennan Long were absent from the May meeting, so we had to abstain from voting on the minutes. And it seems like that got transposed from the minutes. The minute vote to the preliminary of the sanctuary court as well.
And you both voted?
Yes.
Yes, in favor of approval.
Correct.
Yeah, here you go, right here.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Any other adjustments? Right? Um. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Manly?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher. All in favor?
Hi.
Sting.
Uh, and Ms. Crew stands. Motion passed. And I am going to go a little bit out of uh, order here, and we're going to ask the new zoning inspector. Zoning inspector Blunt, please come up, introduce yourself. Everyone can uh, meet her, learn a little bit about her, and then we can uh, continue on.
Hello, my name's Nicole. I'm the new zoning inspector here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
So Nicole, where now Nicole, where are you coming from?
I previously worked for the city of Cleveland Heights. I was a city planner there. I worked for several local communities as well. And low income housing and senior housing developers, as well as community development corporations. I currently live in Cleveland, Ohio, but I went to Brunswick High School, so I know Hinckley very well.
Good. She's got a wealth of experience and we're happy to have you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, then uh, moving on, we have the um, we've, we've kind of shaken up the order a little bit, and now we just move new business up front. Um, because we always do that anyway. Um, and new business this week, or I'm sorry, this month is final site plan review for Estates at Perry Vista. Um, we have some representatives for the submission, if anybody would like to uh, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Schmidt, thirteen, ten, Sharon Copyroad. I'm the uh, the civil engineer for the project. Um, do you want me to go over the project briefly?
Yeah, if you, you know, just for the uh, virtual audience, kind of take it through.
Yeah, so it's a a, a twenty-one lot project. We were here originally for a preliminary back in December, which seems like yesterday. And the basic, the site has, hasn't changed since, uh, since the original approval last year. Um. So basically, it's a, it's the same amount of lots, the same road alignment. So um, the uh, the uh, retention ponds are in the same location. So um, nothing's really changed since, from the preliminary submitted last year. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Um, I know when, when we had the original uh, preliminary site plan, there was some concern about um, the wetlands um, outside of the project and the, the adjacent um, properties. Um, obviously, we got the comments from the, the, the um, county that um, you guys had it surveyed and everything should be, should be good. Would you, would you give me kind of a little bit more understanding of what, what's going on with those ditch improvements? Because it looks like the, the retention pond is going to be either smaller or filled in and potentially sending the water instead of inland more towards the ditch, and they're already saying that it comes over the walk, over the road now.
So basically, originally on the site, there was an existing pond. So we, so we actually modified that pond per county standards. Put a bench up top, a safety bench within the pond, and um, we received approval for that pond. It was reviewed. We have full engineering approval. Obviously, the, the project's almost done. I'm sure it's gonna be paved.
It's already.
It's ready, ready.
Already, the road's in.
The road's in already. So I mean, um, I think, you know, part of the issue was the outlet that was there existing. We put in outlet structure, a new outlet structure on it to control the flows coming into the pond and meet the county standards. So I mean, I, I haven't heard of any issues um, after that was installed.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and I assume that the, has the Army Corps already reviewed and approved?
Oh yeah, we have all permits in hand. That's part of the county approval. We couldn't start the project until we had that.
I, so while we're, while we're kind of looking over this a little bit ago, I, I noticed um, you guys had the nice, nice picture of the um, the sign it, this proposed.
Hmm.
Uh, I don't see it annotated on the uh, plan. Or, I, it might be there. I just, it might be overlooked here.
What was left off?
Sometimes plans get a little busy.
Think either way, it's gonna be, you know, in the front corner. Um. I mean, I don't know. Have you decided which side yet?
So it'll be on the north side?
Yeah.
Okay.
North side.
Near, near the, near the road? Like right at the intersection?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's certain uh, with the zoning, there's a certain requirement from the right of way it has to be, so we'll meet.
The center.
Exactly. So we'll meet any kind of requirements on the sign placement, but that'll be the general location of it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about this one?
Generally?
Yes.
I just have two, well, one question, I think, right now. Let me read this. So there's an E twenty-nine on this picture. Twenty-nine. Is it showing those? Is it the, showing them? Is E twenty-nine representing the distance for the inner of those two circles or the?
That's just the lines too. That's a bearing distance from this table. So those are for the, for the easement lines.
Right. Um, but I, the reason I'm asking about E twenty-nine is because it's a measurement. It's sixty-three feet.
Hmm.
And I'm trying to figure out where that sixty-three feet is on here.
Where are you seeing that, Marcus? If you what sub lot?
It's sub lot eleven.
So all, all of these distances are based off of the interior line?
So it's the interior?
And then there's a easement beyond that for the water. So that's the, that's the, that hatch portion is the water easement.
Okay, so where, I guess, again, it's hard for me to tell. Where does the pavement end?
So since it's a private pavement, there's, there's uh, not a right of way.
Correct.
So basically, we just gave him access easement and then a utility easement beyond that. So the plat doesn't, doesn't show the pavement extents.
So just, I, I guess here's just my concern, right? Our lots are, are, are cul-de-sac lots required to be seventy feet.
Hmm.
And Inspector Wilson had indicated that it is seventy feet.
Hmm.
For a private street, we measured the lot with at the pavement edge. That's what it says. The distance measured between the side lot lines measured along the property line at the street right of way or pavement edge for a private street. I can't figure out from any of the maps that you should provide it, where, what the measurement is of that lot, sub lot eleven at the pavement edge. Because if it's E twenty-nine, it's under seventy feet. And Chair, I'm looking at this diagram.
Uh.
It gives you the table, easement line table, and there's an E twenty-nine, which is roughly.
Where do you have that?
It's in this package.
Uh.
From this, with the staff report.
And if, if you, if I'm to get more detail on those.
Cindy, do we have a blow up of the shed? You know, Inspector Wilson normally gets a giant blow up, but I don't know if we have those plans yet.
Let me just check the office.
So from a private, so for a private road, what does it say in the code again? Seventy-three feet from?
From pavement edge.
Pavement edge, and is that on the radius? I believe it's on the radius.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just very tough for me to, if I, that's why I'm like, I just want to make sure that one lot, it looks tight, and that's why I was questioning that one lot.
Yeah, based on the information I have, I mean, I don't have the improvement plans to
Yeah.
to get that, to get that information. I'm not sure if I can really say at this point.
That was uh, oh wait, that. Trustee to get back.
She went, oh, yeah.
There's not a better.
Be here though. You won't say.
I know, but it's hard to see. I can't tell where this seventy looks like it's measuring something
within that E twenty-nine.
I just can't even tell what that, here's another map, and we, we're seeing a seventy here, but I can't map where that seventy
This is a preliminary.
is following.
But. Thank you.
I don't know if it's going to be here.
That looks like a, kind of going into the lot, not a radius. I just.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's a distance just from the center of the cul-de-sac.
Absolutely.
Those seventy-foot distances.
Yeah.
I think it's just mapping out the distance from the center, from the center of the cul-de-sac to like the water line and
Okay.
other items in the, in the easements.
Would this not be verified, we submit for building permits, if yours don't mean anyway?
No, because the lots will be defined before you submit for building permits. Right? If your lots, your lots will be staked before any building permits are submitted. And so if the lot's already under.
Well, I guess one question is, is that for, is that on a cul-de-sac though too? Because there's always variables.
It's a hundred and seventy-five on.
Okay.
Cul-de-sac, seventy on.
Just verifying that, okay.
As I said, I just can't, unfortunately, I don't have a
All right.
any one document.
Talking about like right here, that's seventy feet at the edge of pavement.
Your same state.
Yeah. So we can all look at it, but I do see what you're saying where
This is on.
E twenty-nine, right, and it's even listed down here as
It's listed as sixty-three. But that's on an octagon, and that's a straight line, not a curved radius. But I just can't figure out where the road is in relation to that measurement.
Hmm.
To figure out if we're seventy or under seventy. That was the one lot that I couldn't come close to verifying. That was the only one that I saw that, that was a potential issue. The other one, the other comment is more of a comment just for this board for future consideration. If you look at sub lot S L fourteen, S L fourteen has a pretty unusual shape. It's, it, it's straight out, straight back, and then it flares out. Well, they're measuring a hundred and seventy-five as, if you measured it just between the two sidelines, it's under a hundred and seventy-five. But because it follows the cul-de-sac for part of that, that's how they're deriving the hundred and seventy-five, it looks like. And I think that that's consistent with what we have in our book currently, so I don't have an issue with sub lot fourteen. But that's just something for us to consider for future amendments, if that's how we want it to be measured, or if we want it to be measured sideline to sideline, straight across, because they're able to get a smaller lot because of that. Um, but again, I think that's an accurate, that's, that's proper to do in view of our current text. So the only one I had an issue, potential issue with was sub lot eleven, and it very well could be seventy.
Hmm.
I just can't tell.
Okay.
The, the only other thing that I had a comment on was I think that, that you just updated the um, the, the, the covenants and restrictions to reference the private street language. I don't know, Chair, has that language been sent to our prosecutor yet for review and approval?
I don't know that it's been sent to the prosecutor. Um, I know it did get sent up to um, the county. I haven't received anything from the county regarding the, the updated language here.
I, I just think that that, I mean, we can obviously approve the site plan
Hmm.
and condition on approval from the prosecutor. But I do think that because this is a private street, we just want to make sure that that language is correct in the covenants um, for the private street language. But I don't have, I mean, again, that's just a conditional approval.
Yeah.
So I don't have an issue with it. But I do think we should certainly get it over to the prosecutor.
Even, even with this um, sub lot eleven, I think that's also conditional.
Right.
Um, it's just one of those things, it's just a verification. As long as we verify that it's, that it's seventy feet along that, um, along that arc. And to your point about um, sub lot fourteen, um. I, i- i- it's, it's, it's a point well made. Um, I, I do look at it as like, okay, well, so technically, it's also on the cul-de-sac, so.
That's another way you can.
You're over a hundred, you're over that seventy foot, and it's. Yeah, no, I, I totally understand that. That's, that's a.
It's just, again, language for us to consider. Nothing, nothing with the fight, your site plan.
You guys, you guys are good on porking. Any other thoughts on specific points on the site plan? Did everybody have a chance to review the uh, covenants as well? And did anything stand out there? I'm sorry, let's, if one man coming up to the, could you come up? Thank you.
Nelson, I'll take Josh. Land, um, just want to let you know that I misspoke in regards to the sign. It is actually going on the right-hand side. So when you point, it would be on the right hand, not left. So I kind of reviewed that, so just want to let you know.
You'll have a separate permit for the site.
Yes.
Anyway, so.
Yeah. It's just one of the.
Hmm.
Are there any other questions before we start going through the checklist?
I guess I have a question more for the board.
Yeah.
So we looked at this back, I think back in December is when we first got some of this paperwork, and I went back and I looked through some of it. And it's something that I missed back then. And I guess just going forward uh, for myself to understand, uh, just looking for a little bit of clarification. In, in one of the documents that we got the first time around, it does talk about the, the idea that this is um, it's not consistent with the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan. And I don't know that I remember ever talking about that here. It is, can someone kind of shed some light onto?
Um, when you say it's not consistent with the twenty fifteen plan?
With the future land use map, it wasn't consistent, being that it was supposed to be zoned for, or subject site was for commercial use.
So the, the comprehensive plan is a roadmap. It's not a zoning resolution. And so we have to follow our zoning regulations until such time as we amend the resolution to bring ourselves more at board with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is almost just um, a guide for us to craft the law.
Got it.
Which is the resolution.
Okay. I just wanted to, again, that was just something that, going back through my, my pile of paperwork, it kind of it wasn't clear in my mind, and I just wanted to.
The, the, the way I've always kind of viewed the two is declaration of independence versus the constitution. One's law, one's an idea that we, we aspire to. Um, until we do a map amendment saying, no, this is industrial, commercial, whatever, it can be used for what it's currently zoned as.
Well, thank you for clarifying.
Trustee, has the township trustees approved the private street yet?
In what respect?
Um, our zoning resolution says on page fifty-one that uh, streets that are not otherwise required to be public streets pursuant to subsection one above may be approved, may be approved as private streets. The uh, the Township Zoning Commission may approve private streets with the concurrence of the Township Board of Trustees when the following requirements are met. A private street shall not be planned or be expected to extend to serve property outside the planned residential development. Public right-of-way shall not be required for private streets. However, utility easements may be required along the length. The design and layout of the private street shall provide adequate and safe access to the intended dwellings as determined by the Hinckley Township uh, Police and Fire Departments of Medina County Engineering Code for Subdivision Standards, all elements of private street that are to be provided in a consti, that's conservation, so that doesn't matter. So I'm just wondering, it says with the concurrence of the Township Board of Trustees, I would assume that concurrence would require a resolution of approval as your concurrence. So I don't know if we um, need to approve, vote to approve the private street, although we probably should have already done that, and I think we probably did as part of our preliminary. Um, and then the township needs to concur with that, or how that mechanism will work?
Nicole, what process was for the Rockbridge?
Rockbridge wants on a private street. It's a public.
Oh, is it? That, I, one, one thing that's, that's also in the subsection for conservation developments.
Oh, is, hang on, that would be a good point.
Six, six R one, one point seven.
Then that would, yeah.
So it's, it's kind of a new point.
Yep.
It not being a conservation development.
You're right. Sorry, I was just looking for private street, and that's where it hit. Good.
He's familiar.
Me as well, because I'm like, I think we should have dealt with that.
That's why I like to tell me more.
All right, if no one else has any other questions, we can start um, going through the final flight, by final site plan submission requirements. Um, as you guys know, you've been here plenty of times. Um, it is just a checklist. It is yes or no. Um, or not applicable. So uh, to review your uh, your site plan, you have an accurate legal description prepared by a certified registered surveyor of the state. Yes. A property location map showing existing property lines, easements, utilities, and street right-of-ways. Yes. A final site plan prepared by a qualified professional and drawn to an appropriate scale indicating the following. Use, location, and height of existing and proposed buildings, structures, other than proposed units on the simple lines. Location of all public right-of-ways, private streets, and common drives. Location and configuration of off-street parking areas and loading areas. The arrangement of internal and in-out traffic movement, including access roads and drives and lanes and other pavement markings to direct and control parking and circulation. So far, we're, we're, I'm saying yes to all these things already to this. Proposed and existing fences, walls, signs, and lighting. I don't believe that's on the plan. Um. We, we have a picture of it. It looks great. That, that is going to be a condition, or, yeah, conditional. Um, location and layout of all proposed and existing outdoor storage areas, including storage of waste materials and location of trash, trash receptacles. Sanitary sewers, water, and other utilities, including fire hydrants as required, and proposed drainage and stormwater management. Dimensions of all buildings, building spacing, setbacks, parking areas, drives, and walkways. A topographic survey of the proposed development area with contour lines in two-foot intervals. Existing vegetation features, including large, isolated trees, one foot or more in diameter, wooded areas, wetlands, and other environmental features. Proposed landscaping and screening plans indicating the preliminary description of the location and nature of existing and proposed vegetation, landscaping and screening elements, and any existing trees to be removed. Preliminary architectural plans for the proposed development or use showing exterior elevations prepared by a professional engineer, architect, or surveyor, which shall contain their respective seal. A summary table showing total acres of the proposed development. Number of acres devoted to each type of use, including streets and open space, number of dwelling units by type. For phase development, is this a single-phase development? Okay. Proposed schedule for completion of improvements that are designed to relate to, benefit, or be used by the entire development. Such schedules shall be submitted with first phase and shall relate completion of such improvements to completion of one or more phases of the development. A road pulver permit when required by the Medina County Highway Engineers Department. A letter from the appropriate public agency stating that the proposed development or use conforms or will conform to all applicable sanitary sewer, water, grading, and surface draining flood plan and wetland regulations if applicable. The following items for, doesn't apply. It's not a conservation development. Other information necessary for the evaluation of the final site plan as deemed necessary by the Township Zoning Inspector. In the case of subdivision review, the Township Zoning Commission reviews for zoning compliance only. And review fees, the applicant shall pay such fees as set by the Township Board of Trustees. All right, so after going through all that, the only um, the only things that stand out to me are going to be the um, proposed sign. Um, their, their entry sign and potentially the confirmation or the come, whether or not sub lot eleven conforms with zoning regulations. Um, at this point, I would.
Uh, one more, the approval of the covenants by the township attorney.
Okay.
Remember, for the private street, we just need to confirm
Yes.
that this language is ironclad, that this is a private street and they're responsible for maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this point, I'd accept a, or I'd entertain a motion for um, final site plan approval pending um.
Three things.
The
A map showing the sign?
Map showing the sign, the um,
The confirmation that sub lot.
Confirmation of sub lot eleven has a seventy foot on the radius, as well as approval through the um, prosecutor's office of the covenants.
Correct.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
Second.
Second by Fisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
All right.
Motion passed.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I don't know, Marcus, if this is it, but if you look at those lines, there's two lines on that left. The first one is up top. Which is sixty-three. The second one is, it's only.
That's seventy measuring this way you said.
So now that the uh,
There are, I think he's trying to add second question.
Now the final site plan review is uh, complete. We move into our whole business, which I believe will uh, be short-term rentals is what we're gonna kick it off with. Now, after the um, after the last meeting, I did send out a working draft that uh, we've been working with as far as um, the, and I got some feedback from a couple, a couple folks as to, all right, how can we, how can we finesse this a little bit more? Um, as it stands right now, this is gonna be long. Um, and I, I want to read to you what we have and see if everyone's kind of in alignment with this, or what changes we need to make. Uh, short-term rents. At a minimum, all approved conditional uses shall require the following conditions. All belt, all. All bed, all bedrooms must be located in a dwelling. The maximum allowable occupancy shall not exceed more than two times the total number of legal bedrooms. As recorded by the Medina County auditor. An approved fire extinguisher must be readily available in the kitchen. If the extinguisher is in a drawer or cupboard, it must be marked externally for easy identification. The fire extinguisher must be inspected and deemed serviceable by a professional annual. Smoke alarms must be on all floors in each bedroom and in all hallways directly adjacent bedrooms. Each alarm must be in working condition. All stairways are required to have lighting with backup power independent of the public electric grid. Prior to a hearing for application or reapplication for a conditional zoning certificate. The township zoning inspector shall ensure that these conditions have been met and shall testify at the hearing. Or submit a written letter outlining the satisfactory inspection of each condition. The owner operator of the short-term rental shall provide the township with up-to-date contact information. So that the township can properly reach the owner operator at any time, whether the owner operator is on or off the property. To address any issues with the short-term rental property. The owner operator must properly notify the township in the event of any change in contact information. The subject property shall not have a documented history of conduct or activities thereon which endanger the safety of persons or property. Or of otherwise unlawful conditions existing thereon. For the purpose of this provision, property may be deemed to have a documented history of conduct. And or activities endangering the safety of individuals or property or otherwise unlawful conduct. Where more than two calls for service concerning conduct or activities occurring on. Or the condition of the property have been made in the twelve months immediately preceding the date of the submission. Of the application or reapplication for conditional zoning certificate. A conditional use permit authorizing the operation of a short-term rental on any property in the township. May be revoked by the township zoning inspector where within the span of twelve consecutive months. There have been more than two calls for service concerning conduct or activities on. Or the condition of the subject property, the owner operator of the short-term rental may appeal revocation. Of its conditional use permits to township board of zoning appeals. The owner operator of a short-term rental for which a conditional use permit has been revoked in accordance with this section. May reapply for a conditional use permit authorizing operation of a short-term rental on the property. No special events, weddings, family reunions, graduation parties or other parties are permitted where the number of people. Exceeds the maximum number of occupants permitted. The owner operator shall request and make available the property of an, for an annual inspection by the township fire department and township zoning inspector. Now, that's including a couple of, a couple of recommended changes. One of the. Recommended changes that honestly, I think we kind of covered in detail last time and it was, it was a, a. Great, great adjustment. Originally, we said. All rental bedrooms shall be above ground, accepting bedrooms below grade are part of a walkout basement with a direct door to the outdoor grade with no more than one step or acceptable. And that was. An additional burden. Over what is required by the, by, by the assessor. So really, we just kind of go by, alright, this is what the assessor is saying, you've got four bedrooms, you can have eight people on the property. And I think that was a, that was a good change to include. Marcus brought up the point, originally, we had each alarm must have backup batteries installed and be in working condition. He pointed out that there are a lot of. Smoke detectors that are not hardwired. And they can simply be. Battery operational and as long as they're being tested, we, we should be good and an annual inspection would reveal if they're not. The, the one thing that I'd like to kind of. Get everyone else's input on is originally when we're talking about the conditional use permit. We included the owner operator must provide proof that the property has not been the subject of any calls for service or citation. For a minimum twelve months immediately preceding the date of submission of the conditional use application. And that was completely stricken.
Yeah, so I, I see, I had stricken that because. Up above, when we talk about application or reapplication of a conditional, it already says. For the purposes, the, the subject property not, shall not have a documented history. So it seemed redundant because other where, other, other places in the text, we talk about application or reapplication. So that's essentially a reapplication, you lose your certificate, you get to reapply. And it already falls up there, so it just seemed redundant.
No, that's, that's where it. And I know, Mr. Kalis, John, you said that you had. Some more information that you'd come across that you wanted to share with the board and. We got it from Fabius Township, Saint Joseph County, Michigan, everyone should have that in their packet. Why don't you kind of walk us through what was interesting to you? And. What you felt might be working through.
I guess to start, I, I like the registration. The idea that it's not going to be. Transferable. If, let's say the property sells, that it's not immediate, kind of lays that out. And, and. It forces the new owners to reapply. Obviously, you know, there could be new owners, so they're going to have to sign. I guess they're going to have to abide by it, right? I think the septic was another issue. I. If you didn't hear, I'm going to find exactly where it's at. So if we're on page five. Yeah, I think towards the end, so page five on ten, yep. Septic inspection documenting establishing. Documentation establishing that the existing systems can handle the proposed occupancy load, inspection to be conducted every three years. So that would be. That would probably be with the health department is the way it sounds. I called them and spoke with them today. And they kind of agreed. You know, if, if the houses aren't going to be owner occupied ever, if they are just going to serve as a short-term rental. Just making sure that people are kind of, you know, they're not going to be on site, so to, to kind of. Make sure that maybe this part of the inspection that it, it has been checked out in the last three years.
Does, does anyone happen to recall? How often you need to get your septic inspected now?
I was going to say, I thought that you pay for a service and they have to come by twelve, twice yearly.
That's those of us who have those newer systems.
If you have a septic system, they have to come by twelve, twice yearly and, and re, re. Check it out.
The contract is for twice a year, but it's really once a year they report it to the Medina County Health Department.
Because they're required to.
Is that, is that all septic systems or just the new ones?
I'm not sure, but I know since I've been in Hinckley. Or in this new house, yeah, it's been a requirement.
I, I know, I. I don't know how often I get, we, we need to get ours checked, I mean, I just put in a new one like six months ago, that was awesome.
But you have to have a, I thought that you have to have a listed provider. Who is authorized by Medina County to come out and do those inspections. I, I thought that that was part of what you had to. To do.
The drip system's a lot different than the mound system.
I had a mound. At the farm, that's what they required is.
I had a mound at Crystal Brook, they never came out. Until I moved.
Who did?
The county.
But did you have a service? I, not the county, I don't think the county.
I, I believe it's a county requirement. We have, we need to do some homework on that, because if, to, to your point, it may. Already be a requirement.
Right.
So if it is, we don't need to include it. If it's not. Is it something we want to include if we're also. When they build the house, the septic system is going to be designed for the number of. Folks that are living there and we're limiting the number of folks that can be there by the number of bedrooms. So it should never really get to a point where it's exceeding the capacity of the septic.
I, is the septic, I guess, is it measured by two people per? I don't know.
Is it the bathrooms?
See, I was on the, I thought it was measured off of bedroom.
If, no, I, I think you're right, it is bedroom. Cause I was gonna, I used to live over there. And I was going to add on and they said, I had to, if I put in two more bedrooms. I would have to put in a different septic.
Right. And, you know, obviously, if, if people, I guess to that point. If people are going to be building additions in order to. Net more income from a rental property, we'd have to make sure that, you know, they, they would be in compliance with the zoning. They would have to get permitted for that and then they would have to make sure that the.
Well, that's, that's already going to be part of the process.
Right, and I'm also very, you know, I don't think what Medina Health does or what sewer, you know, what the septic systems look like. Are really any more zoning business, I mean, this, that's not normally what we see in any of our zoning, doesn't reference. What's required from a septic system.
But I, I would say, I, I see the, I, I do see the connection to health and safety.
Right, but the health department handles, is, is the overarching.
The, that safety portion of it.
I'll also note that this is an ordinance, that, that, that this draft five, it's a draft, it's, it says ordinance number. So this is from a township or county and township in Michigan that allows for ordinances. So that's going to be another big difference between us, where we don't have ordinances.
And as far as the, the registration piece. As long as. We can still, as, as long as legally we're allowed to require them to come in every year.
Yeah.
For that conditional, that, that serves as the registration piece, I feel like. I, I think it may be worthwhile to include in there. And it depends on what, what happens with the omnibus bill, but. And we may be able to include in there that if you fail to get your conditional zoning application, then. This is the fine and, but that kind of depends on. How, how the legislation shakes out.
Well, the other thing to note is that normally a conditional use flows with the land, not the owner. The idea that the, that the conditional use could be revoked by a change of ownership. Is not normally something that you do within a conditional use.
The whole conditional thing is just, is a change, modified or because of various court things over the last twenty-five years, right?
But it, the reason that, I mean, if you think about it intuitively, it makes sense that it has to follow the land, because let's say. That, you know, Greensmith, for instance, right, that's a conditional use and if Greensmith wanted to sell. And they didn't know that they could sell because the next owner might not be able to come in and get the conditional use. Then their, then their whole business is, you know, the, the value of their business is in jeopardy because it requires a conditional use.
What happens is they usually come in to get the, to, to discuss it beforehand and that becomes part of the whole package. That's, that's how it used to happen until it was decided that the conditional.
Is, is there a requirement? To disclose any sort of conditional uses on a property when it's being purchased or sold?
Well, it's been fifteen years since I've been away from it, so it wasn't then, but I, I don't know now. I, I was trying to get something where they would. Force the real estate agent or something to provide people with the covenants or the HO. Covenants and rules before they ran into a problem and came in and found out they couldn't do or could do or whatever. And we just never got over, just never got away.
Basically turning it into a like, alright, put all your cards down while you're going through this purchase. And I mean, I, I, I do like. And I love that idea, that, that, hey, I'm going to buy this and I know that there's a conditional use for X. So if I want to use it that way, I can, but. At the same time, if someone buys it. It's a conditional use and they want to use it as a short-term rental. What's changed by the property owner changing?
Nothing, nothing really.
The calls for service.
But then that's handled through the cost for service portion of it.
No, I, I, I would say some of the other things that we've, we've discussed as far as. Making sure that we have a way to contact them. That would be something that, you know, if there's a call for service and we call someone and their previous owner. It's okay, people give us contact info, the people that, or they're not.
Well, I would like to think if somebody's purchasing the property specifically or short-term rentals, that it kind of, it's a business. That they would have a little more sense and.
I, I, I think that would also.
I would like to think that.
I, I, I believe. I mean, unless as an individual, I believe they, they probably go into the zoning to see, alright, am I allowed to do this?
I mean, the other thing to consider is. That a conditional use we have in our code, that if it's not being used for the past two years, you can, you lose that conditional use. And so presumably, any person that's purchasing the property is very likely to know that that property. Is a conditional, or if not, then they're probably not intending to just continue with the business, right? If it's a business that's been booked for Airbnbs, you've probably booked out a year or six months. And when you're buying that property, you're buying those bookings as part of that, just like any other business operation that has ongoing concerns and. So more likely than not, they'll, they'll be aware that that's a conditional use, that they're allowed to continue if they want to continue it.
So as far as booking out like a year in advance, I mean, I think that's probably accurate if you're in a beach town. I don't know that you're booking out a year in advance in Hinckley.
Look.
Really?
Good bookings.
I think he's right.
Okay.
But I also think they're being used, not just for family.
Oh, I know.
I'm only, I, I like what you've written, Matt, and maybe I'm jumping the gun. I am just a little concerned on, I like what you have revised the more than two per bedroom. And you have now said double the number of bedrooms, correct? You've changed the language for that one. Correct?
No, it's, it's still the maximum allowable occupancy. Shall not exceed more than two times.
Right.
The total number of legal bedrooms.
Right, that's.
As recorded by the Medina County auditor, so if you have.
This, this is two people per bedroom, so.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Yeah.
Thing, it's just the language is a little bit.
Yeah, it's much, and, and Marcus actually.
That's, I like, I like that. The change, revision.
And part of that was, part A, remember that there was this definition of bedrooms that wasn't exactly. In conformance with what, with the auditor, what's normally treated as a bedroom. So because that language was removed, we just said, look, whatever bedroom is for the auditor. Which then is one that's probably been inspected and met building inspection code.
Right.
That, that's a bedroom. The only other thing that it got me thinking and, you know, this was something I shared with last time and I'm still really struggling with it here is. We talked about this, two service calls and whether ambulances and, and, you know, ambulance calls would, would be count as part of those service calls. And one of the things we had discussed was, well, you know, we can get some understanding of what those service calls are for. If it's for like drunken people, then that would be distinguish it from someone who's having a heart attack. But I think that the nature of those calls will be protected by HIPAA. I could be mistaken, but I thought that the nature of, because it's a medical emergency, anytime an ambulance is called out. I think that, that we won't ever know what the nature of those, those sorts of service calls are.
We would only know from a police report if police was also called.
Yeah, but we're not drilling down into a prognosis.
Well, that's why, that was my struggle with the two service calling, which.
Well, just, just the fact that the ambulance is there.
Right, but we won't know.
And, and took somebody away, I mean, they.
You know, and I, I, I think that's where the may as opposed to shall is very important because. Okay, ambulance gets called six times. You talk to the owner operator and say, look. You've had a lot of incidences at, at your, your place and we're having a lot of trouble saying, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna approve this, can you shed some light?
And they may or may not know.
And if they don't know, then that leaves it ultimately up to the zoning inspector and the BZA as to whether or not they're gonna approve it. Because if they're not staying there, if they're running it and it's, it's just normally a, a, a short-term rental, every week, every, every weekend, new people are there, and you're continually getting ambulance calls. Alright, it might not necessarily be the occupants, it might be the condition of the home is causing these problems. At which point, alright, we need to inspect and we need to say, no, you can't do this anymore.
Uh, my, my point was just that, the, that we won't know probably what the nature of those calls are. So any judgment that we make is judgment based upon just pure number, not based upon the nature. Because we won't know anything about the nature with respect to ambulance calls.
Yep.
How did we get the number two is one question I have, how did you get number two? And what is, what if you have a neighbor who uh, calls the police every time, every weekend?
And that's why, again, it says may, and when you have a neighbor that calls the police on a very frequent basis, I'm willing to bet like dollars to doughnuts that the zoning inspector would have no problem talking to the chief or some of the officers, and they're gonna tell them, oh my God, yeah, this, it, it's, it's always nothing, but we have to go out and, and, and see it because it's a call.
Correct, so if it's nothing, how is that documented? I mean, how do they still have to go before the BZA for an, uh?
They have to every year anyways. They don't have to go through the BZA every year.
For reapplication.
But a reapplication would only be if they've lost their conditional use and they're reapplying for the conditional use. You don't reapply every year for conditional use, the conditional use is, is maintained until such time as you lose it. Either because you failed to meet a condition, or you've stopped using the, the, you've stopped performing the use. And so it's gone abandoned.
And I was, I mean, as, as I was writing all this up, I was under the impression that we were gonna have them reapply every year.
Conditional use is just.
I, I, I would think the, the county would say, no, no, no.
You can't do that.
Way, it's too onus for the, for the owners.
Cause I, I do recall that was one of the things that we were gonna check with the, um, with the prosecutor about whether or not we could grant one-year conditional uses. That, that was the outset of the conversation. Now, if, if we're going to say, hey, alright, fine, once it's granted, it's granted unless there are two calls, then.
But I don't like, I don't know if I like this two calls, I'm, I'm still. Well, I don't know if there's a number, but I'm, I'm, here's that nasty neighbor that doesn't like me and calls the police on me regularly.
Yeah, but you could, first of all, every one of those calls, police, it's only, it's public record. They're not gonna drill down and give you the details and the names and ages, but there's public record and, you know, you know some of the police, I'm sure, and, you know, but, but, but they'll let you know.
But that, it doesn't say, it, it says two calls, it doesn't say.
You're, you're right, it says two calls for service, and the zoning inspector may, not shall, it is not a requirement to pull them in. They can look at, they can look at all of the, or.
So you're saying it's gonna be the zoning inspector who has the discretion to look at the calls.
And whether or not they have to go before the BZA.
So what would happen is if the, if the zoning inspector made a judgment based upon the service calls, that, um, that they feel the conditional use should be revoked, that'll be their determination, and then the owner, owner would have the right to appeal to the BZA, just as when the inspector makes a determination of any other sort of.
There, there's a special stop dealing with, uh, uh, questioning, take, going before the BZA and questioning the zoning inspector's decisions.
But you're allowed to appeal as only inspection decision to the BZA, that is the mechanism.
And I've often thought in many cases, that's the way it should be, but that's not the way it pretty much happens around here. Cause the zoning inspector is the one really that gets some of this stuff here, because that, the zoning inspector made the decision, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, so it, again, it's not, okay, well, they've had two calls, yank it, no, I mean, it, it could be, well, they, you know, they, they were playing their radio too loud at ten oh five. And police can't even hear it. Like, is that gonna be something that is just the, the police are saying, no, it's honestly, they're just upset that there's a bachelorette party next door that's sitting around a campfire? And if that's what's going on, it's not really disruptive. Because they're, they're, first I'll tell you, they're not rolling up lights and sirens, so they know to quiet down and run inside. They're, they're gonna pull up into the driveway of the, of, of whoever made the call, and they'll assess the situation as soon as they get out of the vehicle. And I think honestly, the reason we've got two is because at two, you're kind of triggering. Alright, if these are legitimate, let's, let's take a look, because it, we don't wanna be, we don't want it to be so that the neighbor is inconvenienced like once a month for a year before we pull it. But at least at two, we can look at it and say, is it a significant issue? So we're, we're, we're basically, we're ahead of it becoming a serious issue, because even if they're, like, one of them is legitimate and the other one is just, alright, I'm still butthurt from what happened last time. Then the zoning inspector can then reach out to the owner operator and say, hey, I just wanted to give you a heads up. We had another call. You might want to mention certain things in your listing.
Assuming the zoning inspector is even aware of the call, police calls aren't necessarily notified to the zoning inspector. Ambulance calls, any of the, anything outside of the zoning inspector being notified, the zoning inspector might not even know it's there.
Yes, and, and I, I think what you would, what you would likely have happen would be the person who has five legitimate calls in a year, that person is going to call Town Hall and say, what can, what can happen here? And, and that's ultimately how we're gonna be notified, and at that point, because people aren't gonna call after one or two events, unless they're that persnickety neighbor that's, that's difficult, alright? But I think the vast majority of people are gonna be like, alright, this, this is getting out of hand. I wanna talk to the trustee, I wanna do this, that, or the other, and at that point, we've got it in writing, hey, you're well past that two threshold. We need to rein this in, let's figure out what's going on.
I, I just wonder if there should be some, some sort of warning mechanism within that. You know, your hope and your premise, and I think it's, it's what our zoning inspectors have generally done, is have that conversation first, say, hey, we're getting a lot of phone calls, give them an opportunity to rectify. Maybe you're waiting until the BZA makes that determination, gives them an opportunity to rectify. But there's nothing actually in the conditions that provides them with, provides anyone with a, with a requirement that the owner be given an opportunity to rectify, just as a note on here. So I think what I would hope you would see is exactly what you're saying the dialogue would be, hey, you're getting service calls, take a look at it, you know, we'll give you a six-month probationary period to rectify this issue and move forward.
And that's, that is where I think the, the zoning, especially having, having a full-time inspector now, having someone that's gonna be able to have that conversation and say, you're, you're going to have to come before the BZA, my recommendation is keep very close watch on what's going on, and show them how you have changed operation to ensure it doesn't continue.
Why are you saying you're going to have to go before the BZA?
Because if it's at the case where it's been five calls and you're, the zoning inspector is just finding out about it and that all five of them are legitimate calls, I think as zoning inspector, you're gonna say, alright.
See, I think that's unfair, because that person might have no knowledge of any of these five calls.
But that's her, that's also their responsibility as a business owner to know what's going on within their business.
Well, wait a minute, Matt, how would they know if one of the neighbors called the police on them if they don't live there? The only way they would know is if.
And if the police department.
Contacted them, or Hinkley Township contacted them. That's the only way they would know, and I.
Would, would the, would the police department contact the owner of a property if there was a civil dispute?
May, maybe, maybe if there was a fight or something like that, but for the.
For a noise?
Noise or some, some.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Call the owner, they don't even ask generally, they say.
And, and they may not have that information also, cause this all, you know, this takes place at night, we're not talking to our.
Yeah.
Business hours.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, you know, we're, we're talking this whole thing to death, and which is fine, but, you know, we just gotta, either we're gonna do this, do it and put it out there, and then.
And see how it goes.
See what the county says, see what the prosecutor says, try and refine it and do it, and then if, well, we have to change it, I mean, you know, our whole zoning book is modified over the years, as you're, every one of you are well aware of, because of situations and you, you know, this is a situation, we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive.
Right.
And, uh, we can't possibly cover all situations, I mean, what are you gonna do with the person that takes the library and turns it into a bedroom?
Well, in one of the.
Find a bedroom, have it a closet.
We have, because we said it's what, it's what the auditor considers to be a bedroom, so if the auditor considers that library to be a bedroom, but I think generally a bedroom has to have an easement window to, to access points. Normally one's a door and one's some sort of window, and then you've gotta have a closet, I think that that's how they made the definition of a bedroom.
So you, you do know that one of those rentals has been changed and modified so that a bedroom has now like six, seven beds.
And that, that's my concern with why we're requiring.
So I'm asking, I don't know if the auditor has changed that.
Because it's not.
Cause I didn't look.
They've got like five beds in one room, so it's still one bedroom.
Okay, so that's one of my concerns, and secondly is for those who are uh, doing it without any, any of our regulations right now, and they probably wouldn't need it, how is that going to be handled? The grandfathered in?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would be.
There has to be a grace period where you got three months or whatever it is.
I think we would.
You gotta have a great, that's all, that's easy, that's simple enough.
We'd have to send out a, a notice to the.
If we can identify them, or at least get something in the newspaper.
I think I'd just put it in the Hinkley Record and put it on the face plate and on the, the township website and.
I mean, look, it's no different than how most variances here are initiated, right, or conditional uses. The two conditional us, uses that have both occurred have been the zoning inspector has identified a potential issue, that, that they've already started using it for what is a potential conditional use. They then, the zoning inspector's notified, and they gotta come before the BZA, and they've come before the BZA. And I think the same would be true with these existing ones, I don't see that they're grandfathered in, I don't think that they necessarily meet our code as is. And so they would have to then come, come forward, go through the BZA process and mean it just like.
All we have to stake up some, there's just, there's a, a grace period, no, it doesn't count for somebody that you made a deal with four months from now. There's a grace period, and we gotta get this done by such and such.
So to Mr. Manley's point about the book just being full of, um, of language that's been toyed with and played with over the course of time, I think one thing that might be beneficial is, you know, the, our meeting minutes are public, our agendas are public, we've been talking about this for quite some time now.
Over a year.
Right, so I, I have yet to be in a meeting where anyone that's dealing with any of this has showed up, uh, whether.
When, when we first started trying to define short-term rentals.
Okay.
And the other thing is, you know.
It's been a few years, yeah.
In the process, the actual opportunity for the public is actually during our public hearing, which will have before any final dis- disposition of this. So there is a dedicated time for a public hearing, which will be announced to the public, and, and that's where their real opportunity is, that doesn't mean we won't take input if they come down, but that's when their opportunity.
So I guess it's, it makes more sense to just, like Mr. Manley said, push forward, and then that window's open for them to come and give some real life.
Give their feed, and, and, yeah, obviously, we're, we will have, um, people with vested interest on both sides. And, and it, it's good to hear from it, um, one thing that, um, you know, when, when we first started trying to define this, I remember someone asking, hey, do you know how many short-term rentals are in the township right now? Two. And I didn't know what to say to that, and then later on, I thought of, I was like, yeah, but how many could there be? Another.
There are a lot more.
Every home in Hinkley could become a short-term rental if that's, if the demand were.
The prices, right.
Yes. And, and so that's why we, we really need to get our hands around it, so that we can make sure that we're, we're still putting good neighbors, even in those short-term rentals.
So I guess that begs the question as well, um, do we cap it? Can we cap it?
Cap, cap what?
I mean, the number of short-term rentals?
I, I don't believe that we would be able to do that. I, I, I think legally, we, that would be a, that, that, that would come up and bite us. Because you just have a whole bunch of people that, well, why can they do it but I can't and my other neighbor can't. Well, we hit a arbitrary number we came up with.
Well, we considered a home-based business and you had to do this, this, and this, or do it this way.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing tonight, cause we're already at eight o'clock, that language that we proposed is, I think, a good draft to, to.
To at least.
Send, well, if you wanna. Move forward with that, and then we can work on other language of any other amendments that we wanna make to the book as part of this package, and move forward and then reuse this as part of that when we.
Yeah, and I think what we're gonna end up doing is whatever, um, whatever this shakes out to be, we're kinda gonna file it and get more and more amendments until it's time to send several.
Right.
To the, to, to, um, public hearing, and then ultimately to the trustees.
Perfect. It's a good start.
So then that's what I'll do, is, uh, when, after, um, after this meeting, I'll send around the most up-to-date language that we have. If anyone has any, um, anything that they catch, that is, that is somehow missed from today's meeting, um, obviously, we won't adjust it any further before I send it to the prosecutor. We'd send it to the prosecutor, get their feedback, once it comes back to us, then we can decide, alright, do we need to make changes or do we run, run the walk gap? Any questions about that one?
Perfect.
Alright, awesome. So with still an hour to go, we can get into the, uh, old business of the B three district map. You didn't, uh, you, you're hoping for a journey?
It wasn't, it wasn't discussed at the last meeting, so it's all new again.
It's all new again.
She wasn't at the last, the.
Yeah, I thought this was a done, you guys already did.
We're on August, sure, there was no July, she wasn't at the June meeting, but we also did discuss it at the June meeting.
Spoke about it.
Spoke about it mainly, yeah.
Alright, so, I mean, if everyone has their, uh, pretty pictures of the zoning map.
Thirty, is it thirty-four, thirty-two, I feel like it's in the thirties.
Um, thirty-five shows the zoning district map.
Thank you.
But it's also miniscule.
I don't know how I got a big one.
I think Cindy.
I think she, she, I think they asked us the last time and I said, I think this.
I think Cindy's going to get our get a.
A large version, a lush, larger version.
So obviously, I, I think the. So obviously, I, I think the original discussion around this was, alright. Do we need to align the existing boundaries of these um. Of, of all the different districts into existing plots? Um, and how do we handle a. Current property that is bifurcated by the line? If it's a plot that. Abuts an R1 district, but it's also a B3 property.
These are the properties that Cindy brought to our attention, correct?
Uh, yeah, but I mean, ultimately, we're, we're looking at. That we're, we're having the same boundary issues across all the different um. Districts, not all, of most of them where it's, alright. Do they follow existing plots? Should they? And I think the, the question becomes, you know, should they follow plots? The way we have it um, the way we have it lined up right now is. Not necessarily. I mean, e- even if you read the, the interpretation of boundary districts or district boundaries, I'm sorry, um. They kinda hit on. Everything, but it's not uniform across. Every boundary. Um, like.
It's, it's interesting too that I'll note here.
Yeah.
For instance, this is Joe Primera's property. This is actually all one acreage parcel. So you, you saw that they might, this map shows little segmented parcels. But that's actually a fifteen acre parcel and it wraps all the way around the school, not including one of these parcels.
So it's all, it's all one.
It's all one parcel for, for this. It's fifteen acres and a small portion of its business. But the whole rest of it is not, is, is residential. And then he owns another parcel that is a separate fifteen acres as well. Um, but yeah, cause this is what I looked at when we were doing. Let's see, I think it's this parcel. Yeah, it is. This parcel, so he owns a lot of this, this parcel, sorry, it's this big parcel, is also his property. But all of this, that is a separate acreage parcel. So that is a separate parcel of nineteen point one five acres.
But they've got different parcel numbers here.
I know, but when you look, it's actually all.
It, well, it might be his, but he never combined all the parcels then.
Maybe, but it is when, okay, so look, if I click here. There's one parcel, see it?
Right.
And that's nineteen point one five acres. Do you see that?
Right.
If I click here, that parcel is fifteen point one five acres and that's his other parcel. That actually goes all the way up to the road. So it's here, here, here and here. So if you.
And that's all combined into one plot.
If you click right here, see, it's the same parcel number. It's one zero zero five, here, one zero zero.
But it goes, wait a minute, let me just, help me understand. It goes down here and it comes over here.
School and then down here and then I think this.
Well, yeah, so, so now, yeah, so this, this is exactly what we're talking about though.
Right, and that's what you're saying, all of this right here is also his, but it's not business, even though it's all the one acre, one part.
Well, yes, it's right, no, no, it starts here, see up here? Here, it's this little thin one and here says.
That little thin one is the school.
I thought you said his goes up there.
His does, it's this one.
So this part.
This parcel.
But then the rest of this is all correct.
Okay, very good.
And so again, this goes to what we were just talking about of how do you handle a lot that is bifurcated?
It's all over.
Yeah.
You know, going back.
Well, this is one lot.
Right.
Okay, now, when, when was that all made into one lot? Is there any way to see that? Has it always been that way?
I think Joe bought it as one lot and he's been here thirty-five or forty years. So going back, the reason you see all these lines is because this is actually a subdivision. It's called, I forget what the name of the subdivision is. The business district was, is like a subdivision.
Okay.
And so the same with the business, when we looked at the one that uh. Uh, the new proposal for. Across from the donut shop by the Vietnam.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's all part of a subdivision too. It's, it's a business-type subdivision, but it, it was, when it was broken down into parts, it was labeled a subdivision. So all these parcels that you're seeing, these little slivers and things are the way that they created a long time ago, but then they merged them for parcels. So that's why you're seeing the same parcel number extend across multiple of these little segments. And so what they used to do is it was just a distance. So this, from here to here is a certain distance. And that was where that boundary line was that they made a business. It was just created as a distance.
Okay, so they didn't really look at the, the lines of the boundaries. They just looked at the distance, for half a mile here.
Right.
Basically what there's, it's, it's boundaries approximately following streets, alleys or highways.
No, these are just, so these are like a, a five hundred feet from the, from the street, from the street is where this line is. It might be five hundred, it's some number, right? This used to be a thousand, then they pulled it back to here at his lot, that line. But those are, that's where they initially developed them. It was a distance. I would be in favor of putting on this map those distances so we could easily see it. But I'm not in favor of taking what is a nice straight line.
And make it all jagged.
Making it all jagged. Um, and allowing businesses to become far closer to some of these neighboring pars- parcels.
And so that's, that, that are currently, and that's, that's what I'm wondering as far as specifically. These properties up here that are bordering residential properties, they're currently being used for business. Do they have the latitude to use their entire property as a business?
You're talking about on the west side of.
West side of three oh three, yeah.
Right, of three.
They should, oh yeah, three, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah. And in fact, if they came in before us for a conditional use or any sort of site plan, which businesses are required to do for any change of use, any new building. We would look at that and we would say to them, you can't build that on that section because that portion is zoned residential.
And, but then you're, you're looking at like right here, this little L.
That's the street, that's actually nothing. Remember that I, I, on these parcels, the, the parcel is part of the road. Um, I can show you on the map.
Okay, well. It's easy, it's.
See it? It's right there. It's almost all the street.
Yeah, but it's not all the street.
Well, that whole front is, the whole front side is nothing but street.
So you're saying the street is not the green line on the, on the map?
I'm not sure what you're saying. There's the right, there's, this parcel is this L that you're seeing right here.
Some of those properties back up to.
What's the parcel number there?
This parcel is actually probably part of this parcel. Cause let's see how many acres it is, point oh six acres, so that one it ends in zero 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 nine. That one does too. See, this is all part of the parcel number, but when you look at that L, it's this little section.
No, it's, it's also including the parking lot.
No, that's not part of that L.
Houses that sit down there.
That green line right there is that L, see that green line?
No idea.
That's interesting.
But the green line also takes out part of the building.
Yeah, except for we're shifted a little bit. Do you see how that shifted?
No, I mean, I, I understand perspective.
When you do satellite, it's shifting enough, so it wouldn't have covered.
But it would certainly cover the ingress.
Correct, which is highway. There's nothing that can be built there. That's why no one bothered with it doing anything with that parcel, cause it's a nothing parcel. It's road. In terms of that map.
I think without having a surveyor go out and run those lines, we're speculating.
Yeah, and you might be taking a bad situation and making it worse.
Yeah.
I don't understand why this L shape. Is not. Business.
I don't know, but it's a whole parcel by itself. So now you're not even thinking about making a parcel that's already partially zoned.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's not a whole parcel by itself. It's the same exact parcel number as the rest of it.
Yeah, but it's a separate subdivision. That's the monkey part, that's what you're.
You're saying this, 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 this is all one parcel.
Right.
Because they have the same parcel number.
Even though they're segmental, yeah.
They, so they have the same parcel number, so they're all one parcel.
Yes.
Okay, so these have the same parcel numbers, but they're not the same parcel.
No, they, they are the same parcel, sorry, but that's why they didn't do anything with that little segment is because it has a separate boundary line. Just like each one of those little segments of Joe's have their own little boundary lines. Within that parcel, there are separate boundary lines and that L is that random boundary line that you're seeing there.
Why though?
Why did they do that? I don't know. I don't know why that one, I suspect that they left that one because that one's road and they didn't care about that one because.
I don't think that is entirely wrong.
Well, it's part of the parking lot in the front of the building.
It's not even.
Well, in this right here, right here. It's part of there.
Sure, but that can't be parking lot because that's highway easement.
Right, I get that. So it's more, it's, it's really, it's a, a wasted.
It is, it's just a wasted little section.
As you, but it is what they use as somewhat parking there.
Yeah.
So the question is, how do we move forward with this? Knowing that, alright. How are we going to enforce B3 dis- business district regulations? On. These weird boundaries.
How do we enforce building lot lines?
Depending, with setbacks.
Right, but those are all measured from pens and that's the same way that this would be measured. It's a distance from the front pen. And so that's where I think, look, I'm for putting that distance measurement in there and we can figure out what that distance measurement is. But I would say, put that measurement in there, if it's five hundred feet, put it in there. To show what that distance is, but you measure it from the front pen, which is the center of the road. Outward and you know.
And I think what we're, we're gonna be running into though is our. Again, now we have these plots that are bifurcated. And they're bordering. Residential areas. So we have our screening requirements. We have, we have different setback requirements. For business bordering residential.
Right now it's residential budding residential.
Not all of them.
All the ones that any of, anything that you're talking about modifying is. You're not shrinking.
So you're, you're just, you're, you're saying that because, even though it's got a little bit of business on it, we're still gonna call it residential?
It's residential budding residential. The zoning portion is residential budding residential. That's why I'm saying.
Explain that.
Yeah, remember up there at that top corner where I said the, the red line extends slightly over into the adjoining parcel? And I thought that they did that because that allowed for a business-to-business adjoinment. So therefore that business parcel that's just to the south. Could have, have more buildable room. So that's why they went that way. Here, it's the same thing. It's, there, you're, the. The res- the residential parcel to the east.
Where? Which, which one? All of this?
All this residential.
So to the west?
Any, or sorry, to the west, right? That residential parcel abuts a residential.
Okay. So. This is considered residential?
Any of the yellows residential?
So then do they have to have? Because our, our zoning is specifically about districts.
Sure.
So the B3 district. Is a budding residential district. So what setbacks do we need within that B3 district? What screening is necessary in the B3 district?
So this is all one lot here, this is eleven. I don't understand how they did that. Same.
And then, so then ultimately what we're, we're saying is this, 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 this is all. Business? And then this is residential?
That's what the, the color code is there. But it's one lot. Or.
Nope, no, it's not, cause you're seeing it's a different lot number, I don't know.
Well, there's only one little lot number, but I can't see those numbers, so I can't, I, I can't see that number, but I can see one zero here. Here's eleven and here's eleven here.
These are elevens.
And these are eleven, right, but I can't see where distinguish the ten. Is that just that little, little rectangle?
Might be this here too. That's part of the problem.
Right.
But then you have, then, then this is ten also. Right there.
Yeah, I, I can't tell which one is, that, it's hard to see. You'd have to use the aerial map from the uh, county to, to look.
So what we're saying?
I don't know what I was saying.
No, about the setbacks in the.
District, business to the residential.
It says when a lot in a business district abuts a residential district.
Correct.
So it says, at least twenty-five feet of width shall be required.
Okay, so are these lots in the business district? Or are they in a residential district?
I think we would just ask legal, I wouldn't know.
I think we would have to say they're in the business district.
I mean, that, that would be fine.
Either that or they're all legal non-conforming.
Right, if they're in the business district, it's immaterial because they still have over twenty-five feet of screening. Because they have over twenty-five feet of residential space on their, of their own parcel between where they can build.
These don't.
Which one?
Well, those are straight.
I don't know what you mean.
So, so. I, I understand.
So there's our.
I, I understand, but then you have, this doesn't have that twenty-five foot buffer, so if there is something here.
That's being used as residential currently.
Both of these are? And then what about um, the easternmost? I think that's being used for the um.
The easternmost would be part of that sub, that, that new development.
That's not being used for the um.
Or is that the cell phone tower one? That's the cell phone tower.
That's the long one, so it might be the cell phone tower.
It is, so that's currently being used for nothing. Yeah, those, those are all resi- that, that's all residential right now. There's their home and then there's their homes.
Your position, if I'm understanding correctly, is they cannot use this back section here. For business.
Correct.
They can't store anything there, they can't, it. And, and frankly, they, they couldn't build a house there either.
Correct.
So it's just dead land.
Correct. That's the trade-off they get. Now, they can come before us and seek a map amendment if they'd like to amend the map, but right now that's a great natural barrier.
Except that it's currently being used.
Only one of them. There is not a single other business that's using that section. I mean, you can look on the map. Right there is the only one.
What's that building to the south?
Here?
No, one two plots down.
This one?
Is that? No, for I can't really see too well. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're getting old and my eyes are going. Oh, shucks. I thought this was a building.
No.
Alright, yeah, what so then what's this then?
That's on his business.
It's on his business.
On the business.
Okay.
That's this. I'm sorry here.
That's 11. But that's another parcel that then is
But that one's not being used.
But it's another parcel that you're it's half use, half not. So you can't use it for business on on the other half.
Without coming back for a map amendment.
Right. So I say then why are we worrying about it? Just leave this alone. Right? And let them come back and change it or because Cindy, there was a reason why Cindy, was there a reason why you were looking at this?
Were there any complaints or anything?
I'm sorry.
Not to put you on the spot, but Rusty?
Look, just looking at the map and noticing that you've got parcels that are sitting in two zoning districts. So just doing a little research. Couple decades back, there was the same situation up by Bennett's Corners, 130th. And where, you know, it was traditional, just draw that straight line X hundred feet off the center line of the road because that was easy. The township was small. And then what happened at 130th, you had parcel that was sitting across two zoning districts. And they went ahead and made the adjustment to align the business district on the parcel boundary so that when it came time for the owner to sell the property, they could sell it as a business.
Did the owner make the request for that?
Actually, actually, I think it was initiated by zoning commission. So I don't, you know, it's not necessary for the parcel owner. This is where you're where you as zoning commission, you know, you see these things and you, you know, things develop over time. Just like you look at things in your zoning code and say, hey, this isn't relevant anymore. It needs to be updated. This is the same thing with the text or the map amendments. So when I saw that, I just brought it up for you guys to take a look at because it is a conundrum. You've got businesses that are operating across their entire parcel of land as business and it's kind of an imaginary line, 500 feet. You know, would you know where it is? And, you know, you don't. You just you've got parcel land. You're gonna operate on that. So for all intents purposes, people view their parcels as being completely in a business district.
But I can't plot. I I can't build on my entire parcel, right? I've got arbitrary lines in the middle of my parcel to tell me where I am and not.
You're in two different business, two different zoning districts?
But even within within a single parcel, what I'm saying is there are restrictions on what part of the parcel you can do certain things with.
Yeah, but if I have a parcel that's zoned in a single district, then I have a parcel that adheres to one set of standards as defined in the zoning resolution. So that's something you guys as a board have to look out.
I mean, look at the R. Look at the R one, R two border. Look at that giant parcel that's submitted directly across. It's huge. So what do we do? Do you cut in and make it all R one? I'm gonna lose a lot of the R two space that this I think that that might be the golf course. Or do you zone R two and expand the R two district?
And if those are if those are the only two sections that are like this.
We talked about also potentially down by Bellis and Hinckley Hill or Hinckley Hills. Remember where I think that the boundary lines follow the creek, not the parcels.
Yeah, but that's much less of an imaginary line. That's a physical barrier.
That's a barrier that's much more difficult to measure than this. This is a straight measurement.
You're absolutely right. So then it would make sense to use the pins. And and the this is this is the plot. So it's rather than measuring off of a road or measuring off of a river, we're saying, all right, this lot, this parcel is business. This parcel is residential.
Can a business parcel be merged with a residential parcel? Because parcels, lot splits and lot combinations don't come before us. That's an answer I don't know.
Maybe we should think of some questions and present them to the prosecutor. Find out how it would be handled. I don't know. I thought you said that there's no other none of the businesses are operating their business on the residential part.
Not when I look at GIS, there's only one part business that's operated.
That's that. That means you're only seeing
Right, but
one improvement.
You can look down the line and see, I mean, drive back there. Look at any of them. There's no else that's anywhere near that line.
Problem is you can't really drive back.
Yes, you can. Foster's gives you from the back of Foster's, you can almost see all the way down and from the back of the post office, you can almost see all the way down. And Greensmith, you can drive down there.
Which is one of them that is absolutely beyond that line. And
That makes it a problem if there is someone who is utilizing the residential section as their business.
And I think that's a matter of enforcement of existing, right? If there are structures that are on that, there that's enforcement issue.
Okay, I I would also look at it as, hey, we bought a business property.
But they still had to come in for a site plan and
And it got approved.
No, or did it?
Would they be operational if it didn't?
Find me a site plan for that back section.
So you're assuming that when they came in, they didn't have a full sight line.
I don't think that they had proposed to use that back section.
Wait, wait a minute. I remember some of those buildings are
Are all but the back section is not.
Yeah. So they they wouldn't have come in for the site plan the way you're thinking of. They come in for building this thing.
Correct.
And I was not going to get into the things we're talking about here.
Sure. If you build a building back on the residential section.
I think
And I think I think you're
Trying to go through my what happened with
Originally, the inspector would look at this and say, oh, not we got an arbitrary line here 500 feet up the right away. So you can't go beyond that.
Just like any other building.
I don't think that's how it has been enforced or or presented.
Well, let me just say when Foster's was renovated. They never discussed anything other than the front because it was coming out into the right of way, the highway, nothing. You know, even where the garbage cans and or the garbage things are and all that was never discussed that I can recall.
Was that all part of the addition? If it wasn't part of the renovation.
Well, the retaining wall and and all that sort of was.
That was part of it, some of it. I'm trying to remember. I don't know. It seems like so much time was spent with the state because in the you know, because of the frontage and everything. And of course, people who did want to change from what it was with the front porch and all that kind of stuff. And the height too, that's another thing. And they didn't raise it any higher. They just developed it front of it. And that was the original Grange store. So I can't tell you without looking it up, but probably 1840 or some of the original structure. 40, 1840s.
I guess my whole, you know, my the thing I keep coming back to is right now, it's a nice straight line and provides a very clear buffer delineation between business and residential. Those parcels do not have a straight back line. So if you start ma- making them, and that's where I asked for the color. I asked for I you were going to provide, I thought the map with
There's an electronic version in the hands of the chair.
Oh, okay.
So
So that was what I asked for because I think what you're going to see is those parcels all of a sudden change and you have this this map that's no longer consistent with a straight line. It's it's all over the board.
I mean, we we already have that right here and you're saying that that's okay. Don't mess with it.
Because that that's all still owned by the same people, Matt. But when you cut back here, you're now taking and changing for all of these people back here. That's not part of anywhere near this. This is all still owned by the business owners. All of those are.
How is it? How is it changing for these folks back here?
Because you're allowing significant significantly closer to their parcels. In some areas, you're going to allow it almost an L shape around a section of their parcel.
You mean if we went for parcels?
If you went by parcels, that's why I asked for the color coded to show what the change would look like because you'll see this.
The other one that you have right there.
Will become L. So it's just seven.
I think it's almost important to view the topography too. Because like right here, it's such a steep drop off. And and you have to see where the homes are compared to where these lines could be drawn.
I mean, for instance, look at the Flips property. Greensmith would come all the way up here on their property on this side. And then it would come across here on this side. So this whole section right here is very close to they have business on two sides of them.
Is that the one with the dense vegetation here?
No, it's very close to the road. You're way off the road.
Where are you at? How many plots is that? It's like two. Here.
Oh, so this one?
This one.
Yes, because this property would come Greensmith right here would come all the way up to here.
Yes, but there's there's also and that's where I'm saying you need to see the
There's the vegetation between here.
No, 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 I'm not saying the vegetation. The elevation. There's such a substantial so substantial drop off there.
Right, so they're
All of this is well below where they are.
Yeah, so they're going to be looking out and this is going to be lower than this.
Yes.
So they're going to see that. The site elevation is going to see that section.
Well, I mean, they
Oh, yeah.
See it now.
Visually look at it. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, but the any any sort of disruption is going to be so much so so far below them in elevation that noise should be a non issue.
Why would noise not be an issue?
Because it'll be absorbed by
Noise carries upward.
Well, it goes in the direction that's projected.
Yes, and it will bounce. I'm not sure why you would think they won't hear that.
So the only business that I see that has is this one, which looks like it's Greensmith.
Correct.
And they are using their residential part for this.
Correct.
How is it? I don't even know if we know. How do other townships have that property?
I'm sure we could find it both ways.
Yeah.
So
Is there a reason that you didn't want to share that map?
No.
That I requested?
No, I haven't had a chance to actually
Cindy's going to print it off for you now.
Run through it all. But no, the what I what I don't understand is why we're allowing a plot to occupy two separate districts.
It's prevalent in several of those.
It's it's all over the place.
Yeah, it it's all over all of the
Well, it's here and here and Bellis.
And Bellis.
And up there and on Joe's property. So all of a sudden
The B three district.
Yeah.
And the R one to R two district.
Do you really want to expand the business district all the way over to here? Because that's what you're
On the plot line?
No, no, we're extending all the way over to here. This is all business. This is business because Joe's property appears business and this is all the same parcel.
So that's
If we did it by parcel.
We did it by parcel.
So now was that has that always been one parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
At least for 40 years.
I would think we wouldn't want to do that. I'm sure in the future, there might be a reason we would want business there. But
Thank you.
So the yellow line would show the parcel boundary.
So the yellow line would show parcel boundary. Alright.
Yeah, so who's at zero zero three zero? Because that's another one that's dramatically affected by this.
Let me see what he's saying, zero zero three.
We can find. And that's got a house on it.
I see three one, but where's three zero?
So here's the line.
Right.
Look at this parcel.
Oh, you're looking to the left of it.
Because because I'm looking at where the new parcel, where the new business would be. So if we expand this business, comes all the way up to this little parcel right here. Which is a home.
Right.
Done by the miniature golf course. Creek moves. I've seen it move the past three years.
Are you talking about are you talking about by?
Down by the miniature golf.
Yeah.
The creek moves 50 feet.
Yeah.
There's Oxbow Lakes down there. I don't mean to throw.
No, but that's one of the ones that I was saying too, is that it.
How is this two different with the same property? Or the same
This parcel is actually a totally separate parcel that you're incorporating within the business district now. Zero zero three? Which is right here. Is its own parcel, but for some reason it's being incorporated in.
Yeah, see, I I don't. I think it would make sense if if it's like 50% or more.
But that's zero.
Yeah, well, I know that I didn't
Yeah.
I'm just I'm I'm looking at like
Hmm? Zero one three.
Zero zero one three. It's very it's the it's a parcel that's
It's due east of Maple Hill Road where
Yeah.
Intersects with
No, you have it within the orange line.
So what I'm what when I'm looking at it, if I were going to draw lines along parcel lines, I look at it and say, all right, When I'm looking at it, if I were going to draw lines along parcel lines, I'd look at it and say, alright, is it fifty percent business? I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't include these that are not fifty percent business.
Right, so, so like this one? That's one parcel, I think, right?
Right.
Is it?
Yeah, it's all eleven.
Okay, right, and same with some of this. So to me, that's actually more than, it's actually more residential than it is business. But that is actually, they would prefer that probably to be business, because that's where their storage shed is. Right?
Okay, so then.
So then you'd want this whole parcel.
Parcel.
So then the orange line would then come over here.
Yeah.
Right there, okay? Well, this parcel is owned by all the same people as this.
Does it matter who the owner is?
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand is our logic here. So if we cut it across here, now we got a residential here, then all of these obviously are business.
Yeah.
All of them. So we're effectively, the only thing we're doing is excluding that one.
And, and that's a bad thing?
No, no, no. I just don't think that that's, a- again, my concern isn't even this one. I was just asking.
Yeah, I don't.
Oh.
Those are different.
Cindy, we have two totally different.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The one is based on.
One's based upon ownership, I guess would be, and the other one is based upon parcels?
I, I personally, I don't think ownership has any bearing.
Okay, so then we're looking at this one.
Right.
Which is, I mean, that's what you just recreate.
Right, yeah, that's just what I. The wheel right there.
Yeah.
Right.
Hey.
What, the one that excludes thirteen, what that map does is any parcel that is sitting on, in two zoning districts.
Is reasonable.
Now being moved into one zoning district. So if it was originally in a single zoning district, it just stayed that way.
Right.
That's that con, these are two different concepts. And the other concept is by ownership of the address location, let's just.
Okay.
Let's just say.
Sorry, we just hit, we were looking at these two. We didn't realize that you'd printed off two separate ones.
I was just looking myself and we're talking, so.
My concern really isn't that lot. I was just.
Oh, I, mine.
My concern is this lot and this lot, these two lots right here.
Which numbers are those?
The zero, zero, three, zero and the zero, zero, one, six.
Yeah.
Because both of those are all of a sudden going to have see business districts that significantly. Come along their property lines. And in fact, the zero, 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 the zero, zero, three, zero has, I mean, look how much business it's got around us.
Okay. And I think where, where I'm coming from is trying to look at it a little bit practically. Um, in that how it's currently being used? I don't see, I could be wrong. I don't see all of a sudden all of these businesses rushing back to the end of their property line.
None of them.
And I, I frankly, we haven't, and I, I don't see us telling someone who is expanding, oh, no, you can't go past this line.
Oh, we'd have to. But none of them are expand, going to expand. I agree with you. None of them are gonna expand outward right now.
It's gonna change their tax space, right?
It will change, it should change your tax space. But none of them are expanding out right now. But if we see redevelopment on this side, which we already know at least potentially is coming, we're going to see more redevelopment over on this side too. And so what's gonna stop the next person? I agree with you that the current owners are not going to significantly expand. But once that zoned business, w- w- when it gets redeveloped, you bet you they're going to use all of that parcel.
And that building on three, five, zero, zero, three, it's three from the north on the west side, it's literally right.
There, this one.
Through.
That little tiny sliver?
No, I. No, no, not, it's, it's not the tiny sliver.
No, it's.
It's right here. It looks like there's an outbuilding that's straddling the boundary.
Here? That's.
The weird shade.
That's being you, oh, well, what is it? That's the water. That's the water, isn't it? Yeah. That little building, that doesn't actually look like it's being used for anything?
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Directly bifurcated.
But it's not being used. There's obviously no action there.
But it's still, so what? What regulations does that one fall under? B three or R one?
Don't know.
Either way, it's missing the setbacks.
It's, which setbacks? It's not missing setbacks.
Absolutely, it is.
What setback?
From the business district. So it's, it's in a business dris- district abutting residential. So it has.
It's not an abutting of a lot. This, our setbacks are measured from, I know, but our, it's, it, it, the, but, the, that's for the lot, not for the district.
It, what, what, the code says districts, right?
When a lot in the business district abuts a residential district, a screening buffer of at least twenty-five feet of width within the required setback areas, but that's not.
So a lot in a business district is abutting a residential district.
Right.
Which is exactly what this is doing.
Yes, but you're talking about screening requirements. What I'm saying is the screening requirements deal with the lines.
Building requirements also have setbacks.
From the lot lines, not from the district lines.
So what development standards are applied to that, to that piece of property, or I'm sorry, to that, to that specific?
That building couldn't be there under the current. It would, it wouldn't work.
Yes, so it, but it's there. So now what are we telling them? Hey, you wanna start using it? What are you gonna use this? Can they use it for business?
They'd have to figure it out.
No, no, we would have to.
We'd have to figure it out, right? They'd have to, well, they'd have to come back for a proposal, and what they'd have to do is say, we wanna rezone, right?
What, what they'd have to ask is, alright, what is this?
Right.
Business or residential? And we would have to tell them if it's business or residential.
And so that's what we have to tell them now anyway. If you do a rezoning of this just yourself, you're telling them what that biz- building can be used for. Right, so.
We're, we're telling them, you can use this as a business.
Right.
Or, and actually, in that specific case, it would be, at least the way I look at it is be, no, this would be a business. You have well over fifty percent of your property is in the B three district. Why would we not include the rest of that property?
Well, what I'm saying is they'd have to have the same discussion later on. And what I, we would probably tell them is, you know, seek a rezoning. Seek a rezoning to pull that.
But, but that wouldn't be rezoned.
It would be. That portion would be rezoned from residential to business.
I'm saying if they sought to get it rezoned as residential, it wouldn't be.
Right, we would deny it.
Yes.
Right.
But you're not proposing it right now as residential. So the end effect would be the same, right? We're just telling them they gotta come back. If they wanna use that business.
So if the end result is the same, why wouldn't we include it?
Because I don't know that we would necessarily allow it to be business either. We might tell them they can't use that building. Right, that would be part of the, that would be part of the zoning, rezoning process.
What, what rationale would we say they couldn't use it?
You want them to use it for a use that they're currently not using it for. They would have to come in.
Permitted use.
They still have to come in for a site plan. We still have to tell them that they can use it.
Absolutely. And if it's a permitted use and they check all the boxes.
They don't check all the boxes because it's not in the business district.
But it is.
It's not. It's partially in the business district.
So then I guess it's residential, and we should just make the whole lot residential? Which doesn't make any sense.
I think, I think, cause it's a couple minutes before nine, I think what we could probably do is digest it. I think this map is very helpful. Cindy, if we could get some copies of, for everybody, so that Dave and.
If we can get a big one printed out.
But, but Cindy, can you do this for the entire business district? Not just this side, cause Joe's property also has the same issue. And so does the.
When I first presented this, I was focused on the west of real three. I was focused in northwest quadrant of town center.
Right.
So that's why this was already.
Yeah, and it, it's inter, I, I, I need to go back to look at the acreage too that this encompasses. Because there is, Marcus has a point. Do we want it to go all business and end up?
Expanding.
Right.
Town center, which.
Right.
Actually is contradictory to the, to the comprehensive.
I'm not sure expanding town center is contradictory, but.
It was enhancing.
Expanding it, improving it is.
Enhancing, I think.
Enhancing it. Well, enhancing can be a lot of things, so that. I just, I'm not sure at this late hour that we're gonna get anything accomplished. But we're gonna have to, uh, motion for extra time because we are at our limit here, so we.
Or we can table it for future business and.
Correct, but we still have to go over some other things before we close out, correct?
Yes, I suppose you're correct. Or, so let's chew on some more.
I, I think we need to chew on it and then look at, look at the pros and cons to it. And I think it's.
Right.
It's interesting. It's, it's interesting. It's also interesting knowing that, you know, parts, it's being used when it shouldn't be used. So that's kind of interesting. Um, and what has happened, no one has said many things so that they're using it.
And that building's, those buildings have been there for twenty, thirty years.
Probably.
Not had a problem, so.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion for.
Still move in one minute.
Move by, prove second anyone?
Second.
Second by Fisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we will table this for, um, next meeting. Alright, so, uh, moving on. The next item is the zoning inspector report, which, um, we didn't receive one, so we don't have anything. Um, I'm sure zoning inspector Blanc will have one for next, next month.
Yes, yes, I'll get, yes.
And again, welcome.
Thank you.
Hope the first week was fun for you.
This is my.
We can have, yeah.
Yeah, we can have now, although tomorrow's Friday.
Um, chairman's report, uh, really, we don't have much aside from the next zoning commission meeting. It's gonna be September fifth at seven P M. Anything from Ms. Currie?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Anything?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Alright, Dave? I'm sorry. John?
No, sir.
Cynthia, anything you wanna?
It's Labor Day.
No.
Labor Day is Monday.
Okay.
Anything from?
The.
Oh, my comments.
Alright, well, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Fisher, second by Manay. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at behind O two.